So. I want to show you a few more things related to. Setting up cinematics for your projects. Here we are in our or my NACABIM capital tower example. I just imported that same block out scene using Unreal Data Smith. And I just created an entirely new. Project to start using the VR template. So you could see I mean that VR template map I deleted everything except for the directional light. I left the sound. Asset in in case I wanted to swap out a different. My different audio clip. I left the player start the nav nav mesh bounds falling. It's skylight, sky sphere. Player start although the player start isn't super important in this case. What I want to do is create that cinematic sequence in class we covered how to set this up for VR. So hopefully. You'll be able to occupy your VR scenes. For your your project scenes in VR without any problems. This tutorial is really geared on setting your cinematics. Right? So let's get started doing that. For one, I'm going to. Click on this movie clacker icon which gets me the cinematic. Options and I'm going to drag a level sequence after in scene. This is something that I did in class as well. I have a cinematics folder that I created right now. It's empty. I'm going to right click. And I'm going to go to cinematics and I'm going to add a level sequence. Again, this is repeat from class. Alice underscore master. I'm going to go ahead and double click on that. What I might do is change my frame rate. If you want something to look film, pick filmic. Set it to 24 frames per second. I'm going to set my master sequence to be. 10 seconds long so 72. Frames and I'm just going to drag this all the way out. Be 72. So now I have. My kind of sequence and then frame rate and shot length setup. If I go back to my content browser, what I might do is create another. Level sequence and I can create as many of these as I have for the number of shots that I have. So I'm going to call this Alice near score. I'm going to call this. Follow. Cam. And this will be a spiraling shot that takes me up the stair. But maybe for this example, I'm going to show you a simplified version of of that. Just so you can see how how this how this works. I'm going to open this. Level sequence and I'm going to change. This again 24 frames per second. And if I wanted this, right now it's a 10 second, sorry, five second. Shot, I might change this to 10 seconds on you. Change it to 40 frames. I can drag this out. And put this out with two 40. I'm just looking at this number here. So this. You know, end. Bracket determines. What that last frame is. I'm going to go back into my content browser. I still have my level sequence after selected. And what I'm going to do is set here. My master sequence. Right? And so my master sequence is set and now I can put open level sequence. And what that's going to do is open up this sequencer tab which just gives me that time. Within this timeline, I can go ahead and add. A shot track. And I can click on this plus icon. And whatever level sequence. Or level sequences I have. It's going to show up in this menu. I want that follow queue, right? If I had more. Scenes, I can start dragging and dropping. So for instance. Go back to my content browser. Create another cinematic. Level sequence. I can take my follow queue and I can hit Ctrl V to duplicate it. So I can save myself. Confirm some of those stats. And if you recall in class, I need like. I'm going to get level sequence. And so now I have a nugget level sequence. If I double click on that, even sorry, 24 frames per second because I duplicated it. On the previous line, the time over the length of the sequences. 10 seconds. So I might want to change that. I'll go back to. 120 so this is the five minute or sorry, five second shot. And so then I can go back to my. Content browser. And open those. I'm going to double click. So sorry, clicked on the open level sequence to open a master sequence. And now I can add another shot. And I could add my nugget shot and I could say, okay, I want my nugget shot to come after this follow cam. Or maybe I want my nugget shot to come before that follow cam. I can start to use my master sequence to arrange and order the shots that I have. Okay. Let's say I want this to come later. So I'm going to do my. Follow cam first. And I'm going to open that follow cam. And now I can start editing what's in the original shot. Right? I've got nothing in my scene right now. So I'm going to have to do a couple of things. Do you recall in the nugget shot, I added a camera, brought that camera into my little sequencer and I started animating things like the focus distance. And a little bit of its movement, just using the transform and adding some keys to the transform. What I'm going to do here is a little bit more sophisticated. I'm going to drag. It's called the camera rig rail into my scene. If I hit F to focus. You can see it's like this at all. You probably can't even tell. It'll be more obvious once I start. Expanding some of these elements, right? So I can grab. These control points, I can hit alt. And drag additional control points and I can move these control points. I can rotate these control points and you can start to see what I'm doing is I'm creating a track. That something, anything can follow. The camera rig rail operates on something called current position rail. It goes from zero to one and it doesn't represent distance. It really represents the percentage. Of where I am in relation to the start and so zero is a starting point. And if I scrub this to one, that one is an end. So you could think about this as 0% to 100%. And if I'm at 25, I'm roughly at 50%. Right? And now you can kind of see what this is doing. There's a little platform. You can imagine this little platform on wheels that is like riding these two rails. One thing that looks a little strange is that the platform is not. It's not changing its rotation. It's only changing its position along the spline. And the way we want, if we want to, I think it makes so much sense to do so. Because if you check this box here, lock orientation rail. It's going to adjust the rotation in addition to the location. So now we start to. See something that works more like what we would think. A rail system in a. But then shoot them start to. Right? So now we have this asset. What's what's nice about this asset is like I said, if we're dealing with a much more complex move, I can again to all. Instead of dragging out some. Control points. I can expand. I do. And I can start. You know, elongating. This track, I can make it as long as I want to. I can use these control points in addition to these vesia control. Anchor points. I can start to create a fairly complex. Movement. And again, it goes from zero to one. Right? So say I want my character to walk around my. Capsule, I can maybe attach a camera to this so that I can create a tracking shot where the camera is following this path. I can do something very complex and have very smooth motion. Using a camera. Okay, so a couple of things we're going to need is we would need a camera that we might want to attach to a camera. I'm going to go ahead and. Let's just grab a camera. Our scene camera here and bring it in. The easiest thing for me to do is just to take that scene camera actor and make it a child. Of my rig rail and you can see that hierarchy has been established. And I'm going to reset its position. And I want to make sure my rig rail is at 00. I'm also going to reset. Right? So now my location, rotation are all 000. Rotation is 0 degrees, 0 degrees. But that 0 degrees is relative to this plate on the camera rig. So now if I zoom in. Right? Think if I could scroll. Or leave by all on the line. Yeah, like this. Add spine. In fact, I think I could just like, yeah, right click, add spine point. Right? You can see my camera is rotating. Because it's a child of my rig rail. It's always going to conform. To the orientation of the rig rail, right? If I click on the camera itself, it's always going to be easier. So again, it's conforming only to what's what's. Right? And now as I was. As I see a rig rail, in fact, I'm going to go ahead and do this. You can see. I mean, this. See. That what the camera is viewing and I go to my rig rail and I can start moving this and you can see my my. Camera is rotating along the path. It's as if like it's a cannon car. You know, cars driving along this path. Another kind of cool thing I can do with that camera is I believe I should be able to. Have it look at something. So that it's always pointing at specific target. Let me see if I can. Find that. So if I'm able to look at tracking. This out. You can see that that. It's looking at something. Let's see what it's looking at. You might be looking at the origin. And pick something. Right, look at that. So I'm going to. Place a cube. The scene. There are my scene to remember after. I'm going to click on this. Eye dropper and I'm going to pick that cube. And now you can see that that camera is pointing to the cube. If I go to the rig rail again. No matter where I am. On this path. That camera is pointing to that cube. And if I move this cube up. Right? You can see that camera is just going to follow. And so now if I go back to my rig rail. Start. Running the path. That is, I mean, it's very mechanical. So you can do things like add camera shape or. This offset of a little bit. You can animate the cube to move around. So that the cube is not actually retarded, but the either the balcony or something to target. For that, it kind of has a more realistic. Feel. But again, you know, a very quick. And effective way of sort of. Getting a shot and being to, you know, assign a target to. Right? So I mean, this is kind of already. Doing it, right? All we did was we brought in a rig rail, attached the camera to it. We've given it a target to look at. And now all I really need to do is just grab this. Where do I see? And I can go ahead and add. So I'm clicking on this plus button here. So plus. And anything here I can animate using cube moves. And so I want to animate the transition rail. And so in the beginning of my shot, add a cube. And basically at the end of the shot. When I turn that to one. And so now as I scrub through. It's spinning. Like, let's go to my master sequence. I'm going to go ahead and. Right? And you can see that my camera is. Over the course of 10 seconds, following the rail. And. Focusing on the box, right? Right now, we're just looking at the camera. I'm going to open that. We actually want to add the camera to our sequencer. I'm going to double click on this. We have our rig rail. We also need to create a camera cut. And I'm going to add. The same thing. I'm going to move this. Beginning and stretch this camera cut. All the way to the end. Right? And so now. I'm going to click on this. I'm going to do this. You know, uncheck cinematic console, which means I'm applying this independent. My sequencers. And I'm going to do that side by side. So when I click on this option. Little layouts. The keeping view, right? I want my left side to be my cinematic side and my right side to be just kind of free for me. To fly around with my assets. So here. I'm going to click on the perspective. This is a cinematic viewport. And here I do want this to have cinematic control. And so. I can check that again. And so now my left side is showing me what the camera is giving me to my right side. Oh, I want my shot to be different. Off up. I could also add my grids if I wanted to. For the things like that. Okay, so I mean, this is basically all you need to know. In terms of what you need to do to put a camera on a rail. The other part of your homework assignment. Was in your animation sequence to add anything in, right? You can add this cube, for instance. Right? So in my. In my follow cam shot. I'm going to highlight the cube. And I'm actually going to add. Actor to sequencer and I'm going to add that cube. Right? So now I have this cube. And what I can do, if you recall, the same way that I changed the transform the camera for that nugget shot that I made in class. I can change and key. This cube's location. And I can. Move it. Key it. Right? So that cube is moving and then I can move it again. Right? So if I wanted to give it a little bit. And then adding another two. Move it. Adding two. Right? I can start to. Make. Camera follow the little dynamic target. And what I could do at this point is I can go to the cube's rendering. And make this. Actor hidden game and invisible. So that that target is actually not the cube. I'm trying to focus on the balcony, but it's a little bit more of a natural move. It's not. Falling so the camera, right? So I can animate anything that's in my scene. But what could be nice is to add. Something, something visual. And so the suggestion in class was to. Do a. Unreal Engine. Mannequin. Right? So let's go ahead and do that. If you click on add. Go to add feature. Or content pack. Click on the third person and go ahead and click add to project. And what that's going to do is it's going to bring you this third person folder. And in the characters, we're going to see that variety of mannequins. Right? There's a mannequin. From the Unreal Engine four days and there's. Current mannequins as well. There is Manny Quinn. There's Manny Simple and Manny. I'm not quite sure what the difference is. I have a feeling Simple is probably going to be just fine. I'm going to grab and then simple, drag and then simple. And now we could see that we added. Character into our scene. That we can see as this. Camera is moving along the strap. Right? I can add this character into this sequence or any other sequence for that matter. But for for the sake of these, let's just go ahead and highlight the new simple. I'm going to click on this plus button, add actor to sequence. And again, since I have it highlighted in my outline, it's going to be available. I'm going to go ahead and click in the simple. And you can already see that Manny Simple comes with a set animation. And so I'm just going to. See if I can grab. A run animation. I'm just going to take this and from the beginning to the end. I'm going to have. It's running. For some reason. There's nothing. Think. What I need to do is go into the skeleton mesh. Animation base. Goes back to the image. Let's open the skeleton mesh. What I would expect to see is the animation playing here. For some reason. Let's open. This is maybe a little bit beyond the scope of this class. I'm just going to. See if I can fix this really quickly. And if not, I'm going to use a different character and you can go ahead and use a different character. Just going to get much more simple. Maybe I'll do a follow up if you guys really did want to use the scratcher. And I can show you how to use it. But I think for the sake of this tutorial and just for this assignment. Let's go ahead and simplify this. Let's not use this particular character. In the scene, within the sequencer. And with that in the scene. What I'm going to add instead. Is the. Unit four mannequin, which I believe is this. Here. Grab that asset there and then go into my sequencing search and I'm going to add this. Character. I'm going to. And. It's got forward. And you can start to see. And this is a moving animation, so I can just stretch itself. And now you can see. As I scrub through, whatever animation is here. Is going to be, right? If you have the character running, you might want to move the character. Otherwise, it's it's kind of weird, but any animation. Can be inserted. Into any asset as long as it's available to it in sequencer. And that character. And basically. Perform a sequence of animations as well. Okay, meant to be. That. Maybe mannequin, right? Maybe what I'll do instead is I 3D scan myself here. And I brought myself into Mixamo. And I can show you what the process is. Obviously, it's very strange. But maybe just for fun, I've never been a great dancer and it's nice to live. That and see a little bit. I'm going to go ahead and show you how any character, not just necessarily a mixing character. Can be brought into Mixamo and you can take advantage of these animations. So I'm going to click on upload character. I 3D scanned myself. Using photogrammetry. And exporting the effects of that. And I'm going to bring that. Asset in this upload character dialogue in the Mixamo website. And let's let it load. And see what the asset looks like. Right? So I scanned myself scanning in what's called a pose with my arms kind of out. 845 degrees down. And I can go ahead and in Mixamo designate position of. Any different traits. To make sure that my bones are going to be placed in the appropriate location. Right? And so now when I hit next. And then go through this process and it's going to rig this mesh. To Mixamo standard skeleton. And then what that'll allow me to do is take any animation that exists in Mixamo and apply it to my custom character. So if you go into Sketchfab. Or any other 3D website. You'll probably see a ton of characters. Little people's. Like there's some hippos characters. Hippos characters. Sorry for needing that kind of. And you could take any of these characters and bring them to Mixamo. And anime fan easy. Right? You could certainly find or even make your own characters in this. In this configuration, in this position. And then bring them into Mixamo and start. And, right? And so now I can take this. Rigged. Character and start adding animations, right? So like I'm doing breakdance here. Salsa dancing. Right? Again, this, whatever you're doing here should tie into narrative. But. Just, just to, just to show. The customization that you're capable of doing. You can, you could certainly. Bring in whatever you want to, right? So I'm going to download this. I already exported my skeleton mesh. And so I'm going to select it without skin option and click on down. Right? And I'll tell you what I mean by that in a second. So I've got my salsa dancing. And there now. I have in my contents. The character folder in your right click. Creating a new folder, new problems chasing. Opening, I'm going to go into my downloads. And I've got a couple of. Like walking, breakdancing, salsa dancing files. But I'm going to bring in the walking first. Right? Because this one has a skeletal mesh associated with it. So I just want to make sure that this skeleton mesh is checked. And I do want to import this animation. I'm going to hit import all. Bring my. 3D self. Into this folder and then we can go back. We're going to bring in the breakdancing animation and now. I just want to make sure that this skeleton is associated with the walking one. Which is walking one skeleton. Import all. And now I've got my breakdancing. And bring. Last one, which is salsa dancing. Again, I just want to make sure that skeleton is being registered as my skeleton. Then put it all. I don't know why there's some singing. And now if I double click on the skeletal mesh. You know, you're right enough. If I click on this other button, you know, it shows me what animations are associated with this skeleton mesh. So if I double click on the salsa dancing. I'll start salsa dancing. Right? Double click on the breakdance. Start breakdance. Again. The mesh is fantastic because this is a photogrammetric scan. And so. I would use something like this with caution. So what I would. I'm going to use it for. Would be something that's. Seen only at a distance. The other thing is the material that comes with it is a little bit shiny side. So I'm going to go into roughness. Added constant value. I'm just going to set that value to one. So this means it's it's fully rough, right? Again, this is the percentage value. So like hundred percent rough. There's no shine that's set off. And say, we'll talk about materials later. But you can save. So now I'm going to go back into my sequence here. I've got my active selected. I can add myself to this. Grabbing again, I have this animation option if I click on plus. Maybe salsa dancing. And salsa dance when we're getting it. Bring my sequence. You can see as it comes around. Okay, so this is essentially. So as long as you do that. Even if it doesn't fully make sense, you're just getting in the habit of bringing things into sequence here. Putting. Making things move, like I made that cube move. You can make the camera move. I made the camera follow the ring rail. I added a skeletal mesh into my scene. And I added some animations to that mesh. And then when you're done. What I'm going to do is I'm going to click on this render button. And I'm just going to export this video as an AVI. I'm going to capture movie. I'm going to establish a output directory. So I'm just with this. Desktop. And that. And again, this is just a rough. But so you're going to have to change the quality settings. And let's see. I can't find it. It's really, that's what's going on. And click on that on the desktop. And see if there isn't easy to die. I'm just going to build lighting off it, just in case that's causing some problems. Not quite sure why this is. And so now it's going to export it. I guess I selected the. The drive that I can write to to make sure that you pick a folder that you can write to. And so now that's saved. You could see that the creating is. Playing, showing you doing the little dance. Open after folder. Here's that cinematic folder I created. Here is the AVI file. So this is what we're trying to. Okay. Since you guys aren't going to be scanning yourselves, at least not at the moment, I'm going to show you how to do do this exact same thing with a character. I'm going to. This character. Proceed with this. Now where I pick a new character on the characters tab. I can switch that up. You can see now that same animation is being applied. So I can download a series of animations. For the same character. So let's maybe start with. An idle. So I'm going to pick this idol. Very stiff. Very aggressive. So you can kind of. Think of the move you want. And establish. Establish it in the. The characters, right? You can see that the arms here kind of like. Too closely stuck to the sides. I might adjust this a little bit. These arms are out a little bit now. Right? This looks pretty awkward too. Let's go back a little bit. Move it up now. And maybe I'm happy with this. I want to download this character and I want to download this idle animation. Click on the download button. Here, since I have a different character. I need to set this with skin. And what this is going to do is it's going to bring the skeletal mesh of this character in addition to. This idle animation. So I'm going to hit download. It's going to download those assets for me. And then what I can do is add. Other animations like a walking animation. Right? He's actually moving. So with walking animations, I like to select in place. And all the movement, all control using. Keyframes and sequencer, right? So now I want this one. I'm going to download. At this time, I'm going to check without skin. I just want the animation. So I don't need this skeleton mesh anymore. I'm going to download. And then I'm going to get. Get that salsa animation. Which is one. Download and again, I want without skin. Go ahead and look on that. So salsa one, walking one. Are the things that I downed and an idle. Now I'm going to go back to the content browser, putting the character. I'm going to create a new folder. Office. Racer. Now we'll click. And go to. Downloads folder. Who is walking to idle. And salsa dancing one, but I'm going to bring the idle animation first. Because this one has the skeleton mesh. So it's going to give you that skeleton mesh option. Right? I want to make sure this is checked. I'm going to go ahead and import all. Right? It's giving me some errors. Not going to really love that for the moment. If it looks okay, then don't worry about it. If you bring the character and it doesn't look good, you might want to consider changing the character. Let's go back. And grab. Let's walk in two. Right? The preview is wrong here. The idle skeleton is correct. If we look at our skeleton which here is called idle. It's the correct one. So we just want to make sure that the skeleton that's animation is being associated with is the one that we've just imported. And hit input all. We have a walking animation. I'm going to drag in salsa dancing. And again, that idle skeleton to be selected here. This associating that. Animation to the bones of this skeleton. Let's let that import. Think this must be a more complicated animation, which is why it's taken so long to import, but. Okay, so now we have our salsa dancing. Animation imported. Now if I double click on the skeleton. And click on this animation app. We can see that we have our salsa dancing. And we have our walking. And we have our eyeliner. So let's close that. I'm gonna just. Go into this material. And again, I'm gonna set this roughness to one using the constant. Same. Those. And so now what I can do is I can give myself a dance partner. Going to my sequence search. Going to the shot. With my character highlighted, I'm gonna add this actor to sequence. Right? I could also find that actor down here, but since I have it selected. Possibly with a great top. Right? And here I can add that salsa dancing animation. Now here we go. We thought would have been. Need a video happen. Right? So I brought in another character. It means the same animation. I could use a different animation. What's? And. You can see how that looks. We practice a lot, so we're perfect at losing. And then I could export that video as well, right? But it's fairly. Fairly easy to bring in a 3D character and look for animation set. Will work for me soon. Okay, and so again. Click on this render movie option. Go ahead and click capture movie and you're gonna export that AVI file. And so you should start seeing your animations, your your sequences, your semiotics from the life. Using using these things. Okay, hopefully that gets you going and. All the footage, seeing your your films.